Okay.
Okay. It is now seven oh one P M. Tuesday, February fifteenth. Or this is the they normally scheduled the Rundle Planning Board meeting. We are on Zoom. And let's see, people at a present. Paul Green is here. Marty Kane is here. Tom McGinn is here. Susan Roth and Susan Senate are both here. There's a puppy here. I'm Rich Genong and the Town Planner Lee J Feldman is here. We have in front of you, we have the agenda. And as you can see, the agenda is very light, which means that we we should be out by ten.
Hey, I gotta tell you, I had I had a meeting last night that were five hours.
Yeah.
Oh, God. Well, we've had plenty of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We oh, before Susan got on the board, we used to meet at the fire station and we'd go and long time.
So we had a few at the school that were pretty long, too.
So we have approval of the agenda. Approval of the minutes for February first, two thousand twenty-two. We have public comments. And then under other business, we have a board review of various ordinance amendments. We've got the review of of the proposed amendment to the subdivision regulations concerning utilities. Discussion about accessory apartments. Discussion on short term rentals. And then other amendments that we may have the discussion that we want to look at.
Move the agenda. It's all approved.
Second.
Motion was made by Marty, seconded by Tom to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor. Paul?
Aye.
Aye. Marty said yes. Tom?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Yes.
Susan Senate?
Yes.
It is unanimous. So minutes of February first were provided to you.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Made by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Roth.
Sorry.
Hearing none. Those in favor. Paul?
Aye.
Marty?
I'm not sure if I was there.
It says you were there.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that was that we started with you there, but you had some kind of an internet connection and we lost you at some point.
All right. I.
Susan Roth?
Yes.
Tom McGinn? And Susan Sin?
Yes.
It is unanimous. We will then move on. Public comment. Anybody from the public have a comment that they would like to make? If if so, you will need to unmute yourself. If not, we will proceed forward. Other business, board review of ordinance amendments. The first one on the list. A review of version two point O of the proposed amendment to the subdivision right regulations concerning utilities. You should have the notice that the the proposed language that Lee J sent out. And then this occurred after our our conversation a month ago about utilities. We're basically changing it so that it says our section twelve point eight utilities. Utilities serving lots within a proposed subdivision shall be installed underground.
Pretty straightforward.
I think our last storm bears out just how wise that ordinance or amendment is going to be.
Considering some of the problems, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about this? If not, yeah, Tom, were you gonna say something?
No, I like this.
Okay, I would I will. I will listen to an to a proposal to adopt this and move it forward to a public hearing.
Question, does that also cover private, single families coming in?
No, it only covers subdivisions, Marty.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the wording as written and move it to a public hearing.
A second.
Motion made by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Senate to adopt and move forward to a public hearing. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Susan.
Why aren't we including single family homes in this?
We don't have regulatory control over single family homes.
Okay, well, that's a good answer. And I vote yes to move this to a public hearing.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded. Paul?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Susan Roth said yes. Tom McGinn?
Aye.
Susan Senate?
Yes.
It is unanimous. If we can get that public hearing scheduled. I don't think we can't get it in from March first, can we? Uh, we did.
We have two weeks.
I'm not sure what the.
Yeah, I would shoot for the second meeting in March simply because our next agenda is swamped. And I don't know what Anne's capacity is to be able to get the notice out on time.
Yeah, and I can never remember.
Yeah.
Some things are fourteen days, some things are seven days, some things are let's have it in ten minutes. So, okay, we'll.
To the chair, is this going to affect any of the things coming in front of us if we don't bring it in a timely manner?
It has to go before town meeting and be approved. So anything that shows up between now and town meeting?
As long as it's done before time meet town meeting, it's fine.
Oh, it's covered under the current ordinance.
Okay.
We can't. We can't change the current ordinance retroactively to to make them fall into place. So it'll be at least anything between now and town meeting will fall under the old ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Assuming that this is adopted.
But you can condition any project that's in front of you now to to do that, if you choose to do that. You can't use the ordinance to to say you have to put everything underground. But if you wanted to make a motion to approve a project with all of the utilities being placed underground, you can do that.
Yes, I suppose that that's what we just did for for the one on with with whatever that road is we last did.
Lombard Road?
Lombard Road, yes.
Thank you.
We only sort of did it, Tom. We let them put power poles up between that property and their neighbors. So it's underground between the power poles and the houses themselves.
We didn't make a comment. I think we we strongly encouraged them.
Right. They went.
But now, but the difference now, too, is we know we're gonna have something out there that'll most likely pass. And we'll have something we can hang our hat on where before we really didn't.
Right.
So.
Okay.
So next section. Accessory apartment dwellings, discussion regarding where they are allowed as a conditional use in town. And for some reason, I thought originally that that they were not allowed out in the R four. I don't think they are because it's because it's it only applies to the residential zones in town. And R four is not a residential zone.
That is correct. Um, you you're absolutely correct on that, Rich. Um. The interesting thing that I'm somewhat confused about, to be honest with you, in the ordinance, as I was looking at it, is that um, and I've, for various reasons, I've been puzzled about this since I started with you folks, but it says that it's a conditional use. Um, I gotta find that section now. I had it.
It's on page one forty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
I was just looking at it before the meeting.
Oh, there it is. I have the pen in me. Um, but it comes under conditional uses. But the wording states accessory apartments are permitted uses in the residential districts subject to the approval of the code enforcement officer and adherence to the following standards. So that says to me that if they can meet standards one through eleven, it's not a conditional use. The code enforcement officer has the authority to approve it. So I'm not sure why it falls under conditional uses.
Well, okay, that's I don't remember why we I know that we put it in as a conditional use. I'm just not sure why.
Right. And if you look, you know, the the other aspect of that is if you look at, um, wasn't, well, it wasn't R four, of course, um. If you look at well, now I can't find it.
Um, I think it was something because R three and R four was going to be combined together, but it's never gotten there yet. So that's why it was lefted.
Could be.
And, uh, Rich, why wouldn't a an accessory apartment uh, or whatever be permitted in the R three and the R four? As a conditional use?
It is permitted in the R three because that's a residential zone. It's.
And why isn't it a conditional use in the R four?
R four is not a residential zone. So for whatever reason, it didn't get included when we did the ordinance originally. And I would tell Lee J, I would like to extend it out to the residential zones and to R four so that so that if you're living there and you meet these other criteria, you can have a conditional, you can have an accessory apartment.
But here in the R four, here's the issue. Um, where you said you're you're right, Rich, and that it is not a residential zone. It's actually the conservation district. And if you look at the uses listed under permitted uses, single family homes or residential uses as a primary use are not even listed. So you don't even allow single family homes in the R four zone.
Oh, so I better tear my house down then. So that's a problem.
You get a lot of houses that have to be torn down.
Yeah, really. So maybe we should clean that up.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, because everything's always been alphabetical, and I just noticed it. In other zones, it's up at the up near the top. Here, it's number twenty in the conservation zone, residential, single family, two family. It's way down mixed in under R. Alphabetical.
Glad to hear it.
Sorry about that. I take that back.
You'll have to move.
Thank God.
But I I would like to see us extend that out, and and I have two reasons for it. One, the fact that you live in the R four on a residential lot should not you shouldn't be ostracized by having something in a that fits in other residential zones that you cannot do. But I think the main reason I I looking at it is something that Lee J brought up a while back. And I don't know where the legislature stands, but they're going, they want to start telling everybody that you cannot regulate one family homes on a lot. And I think the way around that particular issue is to say you can have an accessory dwelling. And we've already got that in in the residential zones, so we're not going to have a problem there. I'd like to, I'd just like to codify that so that we don't end up with a situation where the state steps in and says you have to do it this way. And I think extending it to the R four is is a good thing to happen. It will it will it not? Well, let's face it, not everybody wants to take advantage of that. But if people do, then they have the authority, the authority and the ability. The only restriction they're faced with is that it's a maximum of eight hundred square feet or fifty percent of the original house.
Is the code enforcement officer, as Lee J brought up, in charge of the decision of that situation?
Because right now it's a conditional use and you have to come to the planning board to get permission for that.
Well, see, that's where.
To Susan's question, where does the code enforcement officer come in?
It's not coming to us.
See, let's step back a second. I mean, that's why um, I'm somewhat confused because it doesn't say that you have to go to the planning board for that. If you look at again, permitted uses, or I'm looking at townhouse corner district. Accessory apartments is a permitted use. It's not a conditional use. And if you look at the, if you look at the section where it talks about accessory dwellings under conditional uses, it says it's permitted with approval from the code enforcement officer. So I think there's a there's some problems with the language and the location of accessory dwelling units. Either it's a conditional use or it's a permitted use. And you can't, the the word, the land, the word that's, the words that are being used are mixing. They're being mixed.
And I would agree with that because if you if you look at the authority in in nine one, the Rundle Planning Board shall have the power to hear and decide only those conditional uses which are authorized by this ordinance, one of which is accessory apartments, which says that it's a permitted use. But the authority of the ordinance says that it's conditional and the planning board gets to make the decision.
That's very.
Where where does it say that?
Authority is nine point one at the top of page one forty-six. It's the very first line in conditional uses.
Correct. But if you look at accessory apartments.
That's what I'm saying, because in in one part it says if you fall, if you're in this conditional use ordinance, you're covered by the planning board. But when you look at the accessory apartments, it says it's permitted if you meet all of these other conditions.
Yes, correct. Correct.
Okay, that makes sense because if he didn't meet all the conditions, then it would have to come back to the planning board.
That is correct.
And so where does the code enforcement officer come in?
He would be responsible for making sure that all of these conditions are met. Uh, primarily with the H H E two thousand, uh, two thousand two hundred. The two hundred. Two hundred septic system and the parking arrangements and making sure that he meets, they meet those conditions.
Proper egress, which is entrances or exits for fire purposes. Um, there's, there's a number of performance standards in here that he has to review before he can issue a building permit.
But isn't it implied that you can get the approval for the accessory apartment from the code enforcement enforcement officer almost independently? Shouldn't we clean up that language? And if the code enforcement officer is to be involved, to state what his involvement is and what the planning board's uh, role is as well? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does to me. I agree, Susan. Because that is a little confusing how it it applicant or the homeowner would go to the code enforcement officer. They wouldn't. It's it's to me, I'm the way I'm reading it, they don't have to go to the planning board.
That doesn't, right? It's permitted if you meet all those those categories. If you can't meet them, then you have to go to the planning board.
Then you're correct. And correct. And and I think nine point three point one in that opening statement is where it could be rewritten a little bit to indicate that if the if the applicant cannot meet one through eleven, the performance standards of one through eleven, that they must go to the planning board for for approval.
Right. But what what would what would that be? Because if they don't meet all those things that um, wouldn't allow the code enforcement officer to approve it, why would we have the right to approve it? Either they meet all those criteria or they don't.
But why do they need the code enforcement officer to approve it if they meet all eleven conditions?
Well, some, well, well, there's there's two reasons. One is because some of those provisions in here, he needs to make sure that they don't go over eight hundred square feet in size. He needs to make sure that the egress doors and windows meet um, emergency access purposes and handicap accessibility purposes, if that applies. He needs to make sure that the septic system is going to meet the septic system design because now you're adding you're adding one or two more bedrooms to an existing septic system on the property. And and the other part of that is that under state law, if someone disagrees with anything in these codes, they have to make an appeal to the zoning board of appeals of the code enforcement officer's decision. So if he denies something in writing, they can appeal that, but it has to be the code enforcement officer. It can't be the planning board. It can't be the planner. It has to be the code enforcement officer.
So why don't we say that, that there are certain conditions in these eleven that will require um, the involvement of the code enforcement officer? Because what I get from what you read is that the code enforcement officer's decision can supersede. Uh, you don't need to satisfy the eleven conditions that the code enforcement officer can, you know, his decision can supersede what's in those eleven conditions.
No, no, that's not true.
You don't think the language is murky?
No. It says, subject to the approval of the code enforcement officer and adherence to the following standards. And then it lists those eleven standards.
So why is it both?
Because the code enforcement officer.
You have to prove it and you reach the standard. Isn't it? Isn't the fact that you're meeting the standard going to get you approved? Why is it? It's like, that's why it seems murky to me. The wording itself is is not clear whatsoever.
I didn't have a problem with it being subject to the approval. A codes enforcement officer has to give you a permit to allow you to build it. So he needs to know that.
Because you've met those criterion.
That's right.
But he. Right. So why is it before the phraseology? Why is it before you can get it? You have to meet these criterion to get the approval, not you get the approval or because you've met these criterion.
You have to meet the cri, you have to meet the criteria in order to get the approval.
Correct. Read it back to me. How it's written, please, because I don't have it in front of me.
It says, subject to the approval of the code enforcement officer and adherence to the following standards. So I don't.
So Lee J.
I don't see it making the difference which way it goes.
Okay, so Lee J, I'm confused by your original statement that you thought the language was self, well, I don't know, maybe that's redundant, was contradictory because it gave eleven conditions and it also included the code enforcement officer. And in the beginning, when you we opened this discussion, you said you thought it was confusing. So.
One, one, because it's under the conditional use category, article in section nine, which is a conditional use category. And two, because it's it's listed as a permitted use in every zone.
So why don't we? How do we clean that up? What is your suggestion in terms of to make it less convoluted?
Well, it all depends on where you want it to go. Do you want every accessory dwelling unit to come before you?
No.
Um, or if you don't, then I would keep it as a permitted use and I would take these standards out of the conditional use section and place them someplace else in the ordinance.
And where would they place them?
Well, I don't know, because I wasn't prepared to deal with all of this.
Oh, okay.
Um, you know, but I probably, I would probably put it under section five, which is performance standards. You know, it deals with signs, it deals with, you know, um, sanitary provisions, hydrogeologic analysis, parking standards, lighting. And I put a, I'd move accessory dwelling units with those performance standards that it's listed, those one through eleven, move that to a section under article five, under section five.
Okay, well, that makes, that makes sense because there's a lot in our ordinances that we were trying to clean up before you got here. Right. Where there is not only redundancies, but there is, um, you know, a lot of convoluted, contradictory language. So, you know, as we go along, let's try to make it as clear as possible, don't you think, guys?
I think that's a good idea.
Your conservative, the the four out of added to it because you were just saying it's not there. The one that you live in.
Yeah, I think it's actually cleaner to have all the districts included. So uh, that's my personal opinion. I mean, I don't have an accessory dwelling. But I imagine in the R four, there are people who have caretakers that live, that could potentially live in a an accessory dwelling. Um, so yeah, I think you should make it uniform across the districts unless there is some reason to object that I'm unaware of. It just makes it simpler.
No question. Caretaker or is that for a family member?
Actually, um.
Accessories are for it. It depends.
For anybody, for anybody.
It can be.
And does it have to be attached, Lee J, to the house?
They do not.
That's the same septic and electric system.
Right, they have to be on the same sewer and water system.
Water, okay.
But they do not have to be attached to the house.
Well, under the definition of accessory apartment, it's a, yeah, it says a separate dwelling unit that has been added on or created within a single family house.
Yeah, so it does have to be attached.
Yes.
It has to. Okay, can we do it again? Because it could be something like a garage apartment or a. I mean, that's necessarily, not all garages are attached to houses.
It would have to be an attached garage.
Okay.
Because it says a separate dwelling unit that has been added on or created within.
Where where are you reading, Lee J?
Definitions, three point two.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Didn't we have that question when LaFlem was putting one in for his his mother or something other?
That's what started this whole thing because he wanted to put it on a separate lot and and connect connected into his system.
I'm just going back.
I think it's pretty standard that it has to be connected. I know that, and not that New Hampshire is the be all and the end all, but I think in Mass and in New Hampshire, the accessory apartment has to be attached. Um, and they called them in-law apartments. So initially, I think they were thought to be a place for your aging parents or relatives to live as part of the unit.
Well, I'm gonna make my life really difficult now.
But didn't they, didn't we say it could be even hooked by a breezeway?
Sure, as long as it's attached.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, here's where things are going to get a little muddier. Um, and I think it can be a separate definition and a separate use rather than an accessory dwelling unit. Um, there's lots of talk at the state about ADUs, which we're doing right, and we're kind of going to clean it up a little bit. But I think we may have had some of this discussion before. I did a workshop with the Agunkwit Planning Board last week. Um, or two weeks ago, last night as well as two weeks ago. Um, tiny homes.
That was my question because let's say my mother wants to live on my property.
So.
Things attached and she wants a tiny home right there. That's still accessory to me.
Right, well, here's the problem. I it's not your problem, Susan, but it's a problem. The way the state law was written, and state law says that tiny homes shall be allowed wherever single family homes are allowed. So that means that a tiny home can become a primary use um, in any one of the residential zones that we have. um, in any one of the residential zones that we have. It could be an accessory use.
Oh, no, I would argue that it cannot be an accessory use.
Why?
In order to have an accessory use, you have to have a primary residential unit that goes with it. So if you've got, if you've got a, a tiny home, that's going to be the primary use. The accessory home cannot be more than fifty percent of the size of that house, of that tiny.
Tiny homes, well, tiny, but, let's, let's back up a minute. A tiny home, um, one, again, shall be allowed wherever single family homes are allowed. So no matter what zone, what zone we allow single family homes in, we have to accept a tiny home as a primary structure.
And I, I agree. I understand what you're saying there. What I'm saying, though, is that it can't be an accessory unit, because it won't be smaller than the primary home.
Of course it will. Tiny homes are defined as anything under four hundred square feet.
So you wanna, you could have a two hundred foot, two hundred square foot accessory. I can't even get a garage that small.
I'm telling, it's what the law is. I'm just repeating the law.
Are tiny homes usually on wheels?
Not necessarily. It can go either way.
Right.
How can you have more than, can you have more than one tiny home on a property?
But the second one would be an accessory.
Not necessarily, but it's, it's a matter of what is the density allowance? And in our case in Arundel, what is the, you know, what is the, the septic system ability to be able to handle it?
Yeah, but if you have, if you have a big enough septic system, can you bring in three tiny homes?
If you have the land, if, if you have the land that allows three dwelling units.
Connect it to the one system.
Yes.
I, I would, I would say no, that violates our ordinance. The way, the way it stands right now, that violates the ordinance.
Oh, the way it stands now, yes, but we may have to change that.
Nah, we don't have to change it.
But not yet, right? So, but so what is this, what's relevant at this moment in terms of we haven't decided whether or not an accessory, well, we, we did. Can you have a guest house? Or can there be living quarters in a barn?
According, according to Section nine, three, one, yes. There's not.
That's not attached.
That is not attached. Nine, three, one, four. The accessory apartment may be located either in the principal dwelling unit or as a separate structure, provided that the accessory apartment shares the septic system with the principal dwelling unit and onsite well, shared with the principal dwelling unit where public water is not available.
That's in conflict with the definition of accessory apartment.
It is. It is. And I, I think we need to take that section in the accessory apartment.
Yeah, I need to clean up the language to get rid of allowing us a detached unit.
No, no, we wanna, I, I think we wanna keep the detached unit.
Okay.
As long as it's connected into the, the septic and the water system, I see no reason that we could not keep it. Uh, I'm gonna use the place over here on the corner of Limerick and I can't think of the name of the road.
South Skellings.
No, no, I, I'm going into the development. It used to be where mainly transmissions is.
Oh, um, you're talking, um, yeah, I'm thinking crossroads, but I, yeah, you're thinking.
Into the housing development.
It goes into, to.
Goes into Clearview.
Fairview. And I just can't think of the name of the road. But that place had an accessory dwelling unit above the garage.
And that was relative.
Was the garage attached or detached?
It's detached. It, it's a good couple of hundred feet away.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying to you before, when you were saying that accessory apartment, if I wanted, I don't have a garage, if I build a garage for my home and I wanna move my mom into that, that's not considered accessory, because I'm not gonna have it attached to my house.
Then you would not.
Saying like that, what you're saying makes no sense. It's the fact of having it be only has to be physically attached to the building. Yes, attached to my sewer. I'm not saying I'm doing this. I'm saying as a person who wants to build something for a family, if I have the land to support it and my sewer to support it and my water to support it, I don't see how you cannot call that accessory if I wanna move an elderly parent or a special needs family member or anybody else that I wanna take care of in my.
We're on the same page with that. I happen to agree that that's an acceptable thing to do. It's just the definition says that you can't.
Right. So I'm gonna play devil's advocate a little bit with that. If it's not a family member or um, someone that you wanna take care of or anything like that, is that not allowing just a second unit on your property, if it's a standalone?
I'm saying, I, I'm saying it's a person that I want to take care of or a family.
No, I, oh, yeah, but, but I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, Lijay.
So basically, so basically, as has been discussed in the state law issues, um, we're gonna do away with single family housing and allow two-family housing um, on the property.
That, that is essentially what the state law is saying, and I'm saying that the solution for us, for the town of Arundel, to, to resolve that problem is to allow an accessory building that is not attached, but it still meets all of these other requirements in terms of size.
Agreed, agreed. Um, but basically, basically that comes down, I, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. I mean, I don't have a problem making that kind of a change. But basically, what we're doing is allowing, is doing away with single family housing if someone wants a second unit on their property. They can have a second standalone unit on their property.
And, and according to the accessory apartments in nine, three, one, yeah, they can.
Is there any limit to the number of fixtures you can have? So I remember, uh, in another city, uh, in another galaxy far, far away, you could only have a toilet and a sink, but you couldn't have a shower, you couldn't have a kitchen. Uh, you could have a, a sink and a shower, but no toilet. They only allowed you two of three fixtures and they limited, uh, you couldn't rent it. Um, and there were all, all kinds of other conditions.
Have any of those conditions.
So none of those apply?
No.
Conditions, I think, would, would limit how much you should get out of it, that eight hundred square feet. It, it'd be tough to get, uh, three bedrooms in, in a size.
Be tight, but yeah.
But it's half the size of your house, right?
Right, or, or fifty percent of your house. So if your, if your house is only a thousand square feet or, or, but yeah, the house I lived in in Sanford was nine hundred square feet.
What happens if your house is two thousand square feet?
It should say eight hundred square feet or fifty percent of your primary house, um, whichever is less.
Right, this says, "The accessory apartment shall not be greater than fifty percent of the living area of the pri- principal, single-family dwelling unit to a maximum of eight hundred square feet."
Okay, well, that's pretty clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think.
So, so to answer your question, Susan, um, Susan Roth.
Yes.
Back on, it's, in Maine, it's not based on the numbers of fixtures or anything. It's based on the number of bedrooms. The septic system designs are all geared to the number of bedrooms.
Right, and the number of fixtures in the ordinance that I referenced just now was about not having second houses on single-family lots. So they tried to make guest houses, uh, really not livable for long periods of time.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even wanna go down that road.
Yeah, but, well, it's a totally different application, but anyway, yeah.
I think if we took nine, three out and moved it over to five, find some spot in five where we can fit it in. And change the, and change the definition of accessory structures to conform to what accessory, accessories.
To allow detached units, yeah.
There is, I think, I, I'd like to go back to the original thing about the, the code enforcement officer. It seems, it, it's saying it has to be subject to the approval of the CEO and the adherence to the, all the standards.
Correct.
Correct.
But why not just, they must adhere to the following standards? And then if they do, the CEO just issues them the, the permit.
So I didn't write the language.
Why you wouldn't say that?
I, I, I didn't write the language, but I think that's what the intent was.
It seems like, you, first you have to adhere to everything, and then you hope that the CEO likes you, as long, if, if they approve, you know, that, there's, there's too much um, judgment allowed for that, I think.
Well, again, I mean, I can't, I can't issue a permit. So, only the code enforcement officer can.
Issuing the permit, but for them to, they must approve of you as well. If you already adhere to everything, why do you also need his approval?
Because he has to make sure that you've actually done what you are supposed to.
Well, and he also has to be the one that issues the building permit.
But he doesn't need anyway? I mean, why is the wording there? That's what, we're, we're talking the same thing. Why does it have to say that, that he issues the permit anyway?
Yeah.
So why does it have to say, well, he has to approve you? Again, in small town politics, I don't know if that necessarily has to be there, because it is the case, he has to approve it. Like, it has to go through that to get a permit, so.
Court of Appeals.
I understand that, but he has, the people have to go through all those things to get the approval in the first place.
Wha- right, why would we need his approval? It's like a, that, that extra step. If you already adhere to everything, then he, he, he has to, if, there's, there's no reason for him not to issue the permit.
I don't, I don't know if the planning board has the authority to tell the codes enforcement officer, you will issue the permit. I, if, if he doesn't, if you meet all of these conditions and he doesn't wanna give you the permit, your, your next stop is the zoning board of appeals.
Doesn't he have check and balance also, having him?
But that, that, that's the zoning board of appeals. That's the other side of the checks and balances.
Right. It seems like we're granting him an extra authority that he already has.
No, we are, we aren't. He has that authority, we're saying he has the authority.
But, but it, it just, it feels to me like it's, it's a judgment call on his part. And the only judgment it would, he would have is, did it meet and adhere to the, those, those, um, conditions? But then, well, he's a permit.
So we, so if we were to take nine, three, one, back to that section.
Please.
Yeah. You change the wording slightly that says, "In order to obtain uh, a building permit to build, uh, an accessory apartment, you need to meet these following conditions," and then that takes that ambiguity right out of it. You have to go meet those eleven conditions in order to obtain a building permit. You get the building permit from the code enforcement officer.
Yeah.
Accessory apartments are permitted uses in all that we, I don't know if we wanna say all districts, because it's probably not, but they are ex- are permitted uses in the residential districts subject to the adherence of the following standards.
Right. I like that.
Yeah, that's all you need to do, if that's how you wanna feel.
Right, you know, now, I got one other question for you. You talked about detached and little houses and what about if I come in with a twenty-nine foot travel trailer? Travel trailers. I'm tying it to the septic, I'm tying it to. In, in the ordinance itself, travel trailers are not allowed year-round occupancy.
And, and they are a different animal than a tiny house.
No, not all that.
This does say. No, some of them are a lot bigger than tiny houses. And, and I was gonna say, have you seen some of these new ones? They were a lot more expensive than the tiny houses. They were a lot more expensive than my house. To be a permanent structure. I think it is a permanent structure.
I think it should be a permanent structure.
So, if we're jumping around and we're now moving to tiny houses, um, for discussion purposes, what we're talking about, because I'll be writing an ordinance for Agunkwit on that, is that they can only be on a full foundation. That eliminates anybody putting it on a pad and keeping the wheels and chassis on.
Make.
And in some cases, go ahead.
Can we finish the, are we done with the other one? Because we're jumping around a lot, it's quite confusing.
I, I think if we, if we just fix nine, three, one, just to let, just take out, "Subject to the approval of the codes enforcement" and say, "Subject to the provisions and adherence to the, the following standards." I think that'll take care of that. And then we simply.
Well, pieces come through.
No, I think I'm freezing up, and I think I know how to.
Yeah, we lost you for a minute.
Yeah, you maxed out room for a minute. Internet.
And am I moving it to Section five?
Right, move to Section five.
I've been changed the wording in the description, and I think we'll be all set.
Yeah.
And I think the word structure, um, Lijay, structure, uh, take the, um, the trailers uh, uh, off the table. Structure means something different, right?
I don't know if we have a definition of structure.
Structure, yes, we do. Anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires a fixed location on the ground or an attachment to something having a fixed location on the ground, including buildings, billboards, gas or liquid storage tank that is principally above ground, signs, commercial park rides, and games, carports, porches, decks, and other building features, but not including sidewalks, field or garden walls, fences, flagpoles, driveways, and parking lots. For the purpose of Section seven point four floodplain management only, a structure is only a building in a gas or liquid storage tank that is principally above ground.
Could you add tiny home to that?
As, as a, defined as a structure?
Yeah. Would that take care of the situation? Because it had to be constructed and put under the place.
No, we were talking about the trailer. Um, and that's Lijay's answer to that, was putting it on a foundation.
That you're saying doesn't structure cover that? If you put structure in there, that negates the fact there's no trailer in that structure definition.
Yeah, like, I think, uh, I, I'm all in favor of tiny homes being allowed, but I think we have to be careful of when does a tiny house on wheels not become a trailer on wheels, so.
But, but I think Lijay, talking about Agunkwit saying, they're gonna make you put that tiny house on a foundation.
On a foundation.
And, and let's, let's, let's also add, because this is what we're doing there as well, and must be um, connected to either the town sewer, which they have there, or a, um, septic system. Um, be, and the reason I say that is because many of these tiny homes try to use the argument, they have composting toilets, and they don't need to tie into septic systems. So if we require them to be tied into septic systems.
Well, yeah, you know, at, at first I thought that's, that's a good solution, but, but then, I've, I've heard of, uh, I know someone who tried, he, he was more of, uh, to, trying to be off the grid, self-sustaining, and he had, he came, came across that in his town where they required him to tie into the, into the sewer. And in his argument was, uh, he doesn't wanna tie into the grid, why should he? Um, I don't know what the result was, but I think he made a good point. It, why should we require someone, it, it's, it's less impact if they can compost and toilet.
Well, no doubt, but go ahead.
Now, I was gonna say, my response to that would be that you are being treated as an accessory dwelling, and you are required under the ordinance to tie in. I don't care if you don't like it.
Yeah, well, I, I was thinking that it's just a standalone uh, dwelling on its own parcel, not, not necessarily tied in, yeah.
Well, in, 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 in this instance. Well, in 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 this instance. Yeah, if it's, if it's. If he buys two acres of one of land and he puts a tiny house on it. We don't have to make him. Put in a septic system. Although I'm not sure what the codes enforcement officer would say, but if you're, if you, if you're gonna be putting that on somebody else's land, you have to tie into their. Septic system.
Okay, I I agree to that.
Strange, but you know, if you want to have a composting toilet, go ahead.
Yeah.
Isn't that what we used to call outhouses?
Not quite.
Less sophisticated, a more sophisticated version. So are we good, Lee J?
Um, I think so. What I'm thinking for the tiny home issue is developing a definition of a tiny home. Um. And possibly just leaving it at that, um but I may end up having to develop some performance standards for, again, for section five. Um, regarding full foundation, that sort of thing, and. Adding tiny homes in the definition of structure.
Are you being proactive at this point versus um is there people approaching a rundle? To have tiny homes or is it a gun quit more of an issue than it is in a rundle?
So no one has approached us at all in a rundle. And um, no one has approached um us in a gun quit. And in fact, part of our discussion the other night with a gun quit was that. Um property values are so high there that they're not sure anybody'd want to put a tiny home on a piece of property in in a gun quit.
May I ask respectfully why we're talking about it then?
Good question.
I just brought it up because someone might want to use it as an accessory structure.
Okay, so we have the, we have the ordinance of saying we want, if it's an accessory structure, it has to be. Tied into this and that, and then if it's not, then come to the board and then discuss it. So you've already put that in the ordinance, right? Okay, so.
Well, I haven't yet, but yes, that's, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, next. That gives us some stuff to work with going forward. The next item is a discussion on short-term rentals. Do we want them or not? Do we care?
So there was a really interesting article about what's happening in Portland. And that people are having a hard time finding rental units to live in. Because so many, I don't know that this is an issue in a rundle per se at this point in time. But all those short-term rentals do impact full-time residents' ability to find. Housing, you know, year-round housing uh that is rented as opposed to owned. So that is a consideration. I just don't know how much short-term rentals. A rundle really has as opposed to like Kenny Buckport or whatever. Um, so maybe Lee J or Rich, someone can speak to that, but. That's the problem with it. It really does put the kibosh on people looking for year-round rentals.
What what?
Talking about like Airbnb type things?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there was a big problem with that up in the, in Portland, South Portland. I'm Cape Elizabeth did something, I don't remember what it was. Um, many, many of those towns have have put licensing requirements um on them, which include inspections. To make sure that they meet certain fire code requirements um. And um again, seasonal or yearly licensing through the um select boards or councils. At fairly high rates. Um, since they're making so much money off those. I do, I don't know how many units there are in a rundle. Um, I have come across. One that was on the end of a private street that were a private drive that. Um, we were visiting because someone wa- owned the land on the very end of it and they wanted to extend the drive. So they had to go through that process. Um, and I know that the people that live on the drive. Year-round were complaining quite a bit about this particular. Um, short-term rental because it has like eight bedrooms in it. And people come up for a weekend, yep. People come up for a weekend or a week and all they want to do is party and they're driving up and down the, the, you know, private drive pretty quick. Uh, and there are kids that live on that road. Um, so I, and I don't know how we control that. Um, but there are other communities that have developed licensing requirements. And the big question there is if it's a licensing requirement. It would go to the select board for their review and approval and I guess what we don't know, I don't know what the temperature is. With the select board wanting to have those on their agenda all the time if it becomes that popular. Um, I think we need to kind of test those waters. Well, there is, there is one taking place in a rundle right now. And that's down at uh at Wix, right around the corner from you, Susan.
I just looked up. And there's like about a half dozen of them in there.
I can't think of Jen's last name. She's the lady that owns.
That too, they came to us and we said we couldn't do it because they wanted to do more short-term length stays with their. Glamping and their pa- all their things, isn't that, didn't they want to do sort of like an Airbnb on their campus?
Oh, that was Ben, that was Bentley's that's, that was talking about.
But I mean, that came to us too, so I'm just saying.
But it, well, no, it never came to us.
They talked about it.
They talked about it, but they haven't done anything other than that, but that fits into his campground mode. So he's already doing that. And so part of the issue. It's not an issue per se, but it's how do we, how do we deal with it? Is that any home can be turned into a short-term rental and we might never know about it. Until, you know, we get complaints that something's going on at the house and then find out through. You know, Airbnb or one of those organizations that that house is being used as a short-term rental. Um, it's not, it's not a a particular animal, if you will, like a tiny home that's gonna stick out like a sore thumb. It's any, your, any one of your homes, you could decide to, you know, end up renting out as a short-term rental.
Yeah.
Um, and so it's, you know, how do we, how do we get our hands around that in the long term?
But wouldn't, so what you said earlier, Lee J, uh about um. The, it would be a board of selectmen issue rather than the planning board? It we we. It wouldn't be up to us to have any conditions, it's be up to them.
Well, not, we're not planning anything like a construction or a thing or going from the, our realm of what, I don't understand why it would be underneath our guide of.
It would be more of a, of what I would call licensing requirement, like a a restaurant going for a liquor license. Um, this is somebody wanting to just rent out their home and they would need to. Um, obtain authority and pay a hefty fee to the select board to approve them to. Be able to use that as a certain type of business.
Yeah.
But wouldn't this be the select board would then have to bring this up and have it be part of their, not part of our?
Correct.
Do you?
Correct.
And they'll throw it on to the code enforcement officer.
Well, I mean, and would they need a permit to do that? And would they need to notify of others to approve it?
If, if we were going, if we were going down that road of re- of suggesting that they are needing some sort of permit or license, yes. There need to be notification, public hearing. Um, you know, fire, fire chief, police, uh fire chief and code enforcement officer would need to inspect. To make sure that the property is not in any violations or that it can meet fire codes with, with um. Uh, fire alarm systems. I had to look up at mine to remember what they were. Um, and 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 the like, so it's a fairly involved process. But I would, I would argue that that would not be something that we as a planning board would be involved in. That would be staff review. That would be looking at that. Because that's the fire chief, the public works guys. It's those, those are the people that would be looking at that because they're not, they're not trying to construct something.
Correct.
Or put anything up. They've already got something in place.
At what point, though, do we start running into an issue with a business being run in private, you know, in residential areas?
So in that other city that I mentioned with the bathrooms that only have two fixtures. They allow you to rent your house up to two weeks a year. A maximum of fourteen days. And once you go over that fourteen day period, it triggers all kinds of, I don't know what. But, you know, you could put a time limit on it so that it's not constantly being turned over.
It's not enforceable. How are you going to tell, no, that I rented my house for more than fourteen days?
Is it part of the planning board's purview unless you're constructing a home to do this? That's what I'm saying. I don't understand why we're, this is not something that we can do anything about unless we're constructing, unless it's a con- constructing a home to have a business to have it be a short-term. And that's different than having someone have a private home that does that, that's not.
If you come to the planning board and you say, I want to build a house so that I can rent it out. My reaction to that is that it's not gonna be in one of the residential zones. It's not allowed. You're conducting business. You can't do it here.
So what do you do with the person who builds the house and does that? Without telling you that they're doing it and it it happens over and over like that house that Lee J just described. With eight bedrooms, then what do you do? Because you have no teeth and I'm not saying we need to decide it tonight, but it is something to think about.
But that's, that's something that the codes enforcement officer has to be involved in, not us. Because they're violating the residential code. We have no control, we have no teeth in that particular fight. All we can is tell the codes enforcement officer to go visit them and hopefully the selectman will allow him to enforce it. Well, but here's the catch twenty-two with that is because we don't have any standards or anything in place, there's no teeth for the code enforcement officer, nothing for him to fall back on and say. You can't do that here, you're not supposed to do that here, you're not licensed here, you know, because we don't have any of that in place, so.
What would they be violating?
Right, yeah, that's, that's a good point.
Parking spaces. Eventually, it could become an issue, but I I think.
I think at this point.
I think it's Nolan dead.
Well, I don't know that it's Nolan dead, but I think it's worth giving it more thought.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Tonight.
Oh, tonight maybe.
Some direction of where it would fit inside, again, what we could do for planning board aspect of it, like what, what would be. What ordinance or what thing or whatever you could attach that to. I mean, versus it being part of something that should be a separate entity. I mean, if you wanted to put it towards. Our subdivision thing that they're saying that moving forward in a subdivision, because again, I thought individual homes is nothing that we.
You'd have to look at it as, as where Keith, where Keith, I'm looking at your screen, where? I know it. My own Zoom account now. Where Ri- where Rich was headed, I mean, you you need to draw the line between. What is a? Single-family home and what is a business? And if it's being run as a short-term rental. Pretty much more a business than it is a residential home. And so, you know, that's where we have to kind of figure out. How does this fit in or where does it fit in? Maybe, maybe you allow short-term rentals to be in the commercial zones, but not in the residential zones. Um, but let me, let me um get some of these other towns ordinances that they have.
Right, I'd be interested to see what other, what our neighbors are doing.
Yeah. I think most of them have restricted them to certain areas in the town. Yeah, let, let me see if I can track down South Portland, um Cape, um.
Just completed putting some together. Look in Kennybunk.
Waterboro.
Yeah, Kennybunk has it.
I don't think Kenabunk has done anything yet, although they've talked about it. Kenabunk Port, I think, has done some licensing requirements.
Well, you're doing a lot of conver- a lot of things that have a lot of oceanfront. A lot of things that would require, I'm talking about actual, like more of of rural locked area.
Waterboro doesn't, Waterboro doesn't, um, I'm the planner for the town. I know they've done nothing with that.
I can do my RSG fifty-seven Alfred Lyman Newfield Shapley, like any of those.
Well, let's keep it, let's keep tabs, Lee J, on what, what's happening around us.
Yep, yeah.
I mean, a rundle may not be the most attractive candidate for short-term rentals, but I could be wrong.
Well, I think you're certainly gonna, you you, what you'll see in a rundle probably is spillover, you know, people are gonna want to be in Kenabunk Port and probably in Kenabunk. They're gonna want to be on the water, um but boy, if they can't get that, they may want to be, you know, in a rundle because they're really close, so.
Yeah, I would say at the end of July, you, anybody could rent out a room. There'd be a demand for it.
Oh, yeah.
In a rundle.
Hey, if I knew I could, you know, rent my house for, you know, three thousand bucks a week. Um, I'd be moving out for a while too and letting somebody else, you know, pay me three thousand bucks a week.
Yeah. Three thousand a night.
I'll, I'll move out. I can, I live, I live in. Pay the taxes and the other week to fix up the mess from having rented it for two weeks. The only time I might be looking at that much is during the Moxie Festival. There you go.
So what else do we have, Rich?
But well, the other, the next item is just other amendments for discussion. I don't know if there's anything. We, we can create a, a little bucket list. We ha- we've had them in the past where we've had a list of things that we would like to look at or. And I don't know if you guys have anything, so we, I mean, we can start a list and say, let's, let's look at this or let's look at this.
Well, I have.
They have busy nights.
Well, I can send it to the board and they can think about it, but. When I had that issue with my neighbor, that I didn't realize that you could cut and completely clear-cut all the way up to the property line. So I don't know whether or not we can require some kind of buffer or setback, but I think, you know. Given what we've seen with developers and what they do to buffers. Um, and I think we might give that some thought. The problem is, the state of Maine. Allows you to cut all the way up to the property line.
But if we had a more stricter interpretation of the rule, our. Interpretation would be the one that, that would stand. Because we can have a harder one, we could, just can't make it easier.
Can we look into as well, because again, as a buffer person who's had to deal with it quite a bit myself. Um, is there a way that we can add a timeline in which buffers need to be replaced? Is there one already there? It says it has to be there, but there's no, it doesn't seem to be any teeth on replacing it on a timely fashion.
I don't think there is. If there was, if there was something that was required, like from a planning board perspective. Um, conditions of approval or are on an approved plan or anything, that would be a, an enforcement issue. Um.
Still, a lot of other things we've talked about tonight, but I'm saying to discuss possibly having it be, if things are, if, you know, due to the buffers that we've put in place for our discussions. It doesn't have anything that when they're doing construction, they say, well, we have to take them down, but we'll put them back. Okay, but when? I mean, that's the kind of thing, is there some way we can put some sort of timeline in regard to within two years, a year, three years, whatever you want to say, I don't care. But I'm saying there are times that things have to be replaced. And I understand that because construction happened and things get taken and they've been told they're gonna be put back. What is the put-back time?
Whenever the planning board chooses to make it. What do you say? Whatever the, whatever we as a planning board decide. Fred Flintstone and Barney Rubble get together, they're gonna put up a subdivision and they come to us and they say, we're gonna do this. And we're gonna cut down all of the trees. Now, we can say to them. That's fine, you can do all of that, but you have to put in, you have to replace that buffer by this point in time. It's an arbitrary point in time, yeah, but you gotta put it back in, in by, and it can be, you can do something along the lines of. Uh, you're gonna have two houses right in the front, one on each side of the road. You can put them up, but before you can get building permits for anything back behind that, you gotta fix the buffer. You gotta replace that buffer.
So every time that this is occurring.
I think we need to have more than a twenty-five foot buffer.
Rich, we had that, we covered that under when we were doing with champagne, the buffer.
We did.
And they went. Just using that as a, a throwout, in case a tree died or whatever and. I mean, we use that as a.
I mean, we use that as a guideline.
Yep. And, and we.
I think the buffers are worth discussing and maintaining some kinds of, some kind of separation, so. Um and I'm not, it doesn't have to be more than whatever we decide. And it doesn't have to be um onerous to the one who. Has to keep it, but I think it helps to keep good neighbors, good neighbors.
Susan, there's another thought here too. Good neighbor is one thing. What about the act of weather? God, something. Part of the buffer, it gets destroyed.
Yeah, well, I think we can, you know, we can cover that, but if somebody wants to come in and just denude the whole property line. Um and right up to the property line, even if it ends up being punitive, which uh sometimes happens. I think that we can have language that covers acts of God and punishment in the same ordinance.
We, we had a big sit- situation with Bentley and buffers.
Yep.
But we were just talking about what we wanted on the bucket list and that's what we wanted to talk about.
I think, I think that's a good item to put on the bu- the bucket list, discussion of buffers.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd like to see them, right now they're twenty-five feet and I don't think twenty-five feet's enough. You know, I'd like to see a fifty-foot buffer from the main road, not within the subdivision, but from within, from the main road. I'd like to see. Everything buffered twenty-five, uh fifty feet back.
What about uh back property lines, the side property lines? You don't have to answer now. I'm just saying there, these are all.
No, if, if, if it's inside the uh, the subdivision, I don't care.
Okay.
I really don't. I want to buffer the subdivision from somebody driving down the road. Not somebody that's inside the subdivision. Uh cause we talked, that's what we essentially did out of the rundle's keep. We've talked about doing that in other places where when you drive down the road, you might see it or you might not because depending on what the buffer looks like.
Scout's way.
Oh, Scout's Way is a, a good example of what we don't want it to look like.
Oh, right.
And, and you still, even in the short term though, you still have the freedom or the ability to condition them. Uh on leaving a certain buffer. Um whether it's fifty feet, a hundred feet, you know, it may vary depending on, on its locale. Um or, or a butter's locations. Um you, you are. In the short term, you already have that without putting it as a performance standard. And I think on every project. That issue may vary depending on the situation that they're dealing with.
And, and we do have the authority to exercise that.
That is correct.
So your two Susans want to put buffers on the bucket list.
Okay. We can add that on. And, and if, if other things come up, by all means, let's, let's get them onto a list that we can work our way down through. And, and say, hey, you know, we can fix this, we can fix that. Yeah, that, that's, that's why I, I got the um. Accessory dwelling units put on there. So it's not everywhere and I think it should be. I didn't realize that there were the conflicts between the definition and the ordinance it's uh itself.
So um, one of the other things I'll throw out there. Um is that you do have. You, you do have a wind energy conversion systems ordinance. And um, wind is our least concern. Because no one that I know of is gonna put wind energy systems down this way because we don't have enough wind. But that being said, you've got it in place. What you don't have is anything to deal with solar. And um I know that. Um many towns are starting to put up resistance to solar farms. Um many towns in Maine do not have any kind of ordinances to deal with them and they've been going in. Through planning board process um as a utility, because many towns haven't had definitions of any of this. I can tell you that at least from a model standpoint, um. I have drafted something. Um, so I don't know if you followed what's going on up in Lovell.
Yep.
Um Lovell, um as you know, um is a pretty rural community and has a really nice lake. Um and people want to keep that community very rural um in nature. Um and a company came in with a commercial sized solar project, two hundred acres. Versus the ones you see around here, which are twenty acres. So, you know, imagine how big that is. So they've put a moratorium in place um in order to deal with this issue. And um the attorney representing the town pulled me in. Um and I have drafted a model um ordinance with a number of performance standards. To deal with large scale solar projects. And I think that. Um. It's pretty generic in that or, or transferable. So if you want to take a look at that, um I'd be happy to share that with you. Um there's a number of political things going on in Lovell and, and with the. With the solar company and with the town and others that my model may never see the light of day up there. Um and it's not because it's a bad ordinance, it's because um people do not want this solar project up there. And someone that has proposed a um, an ordinance that's just gonna shut them out of town. Um is going to a town meeting in March. And so we suspect that's gonna get approved and the company that's proposing the solar project has said, if that happens, we're gonna walk. Um and we'll go find a town that wants us. Where that is or who that is, we don't know.
Well, they should, they should put something in here, ordinance similar to what we have. Anything that is not specifically allowed is expressly prohibited.
And there lies the problem, because their ordinance says if it's not listed, you need to find the next closest use that is.
And, 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 and we, we kind of by default, we've had that where. Where it was left up to the CEO to decide which was closest to it and we had no, I forget what the issue was, but. We had no right to, to argue that that wasn't the intent. I think if it's, if it. A duck, maybe it's a goose, you know, and, and, and they would allow it.
Doesn't the town hall have its own small little solar farm?
Yes.
Just curious.
So, but that's a cautionary tale because it precisely when we were talking about. You know, short term rentals and things like that. If we don't have anything on the books, there's nothing to be enforced. And it almost leaves uh the whole subject matter open uh like the wild, wild west. And so, you know, I think we do have to start being uh preemptive in terms of our thinking. In order to anticipate some of these things that are coming down the pipe. Because Arundel has a lot of land. Still.
And, and the, don't think that, I mean, the ordinance that I'm writing. Is not a, is not a stop the solar ordinance. It is an ordinance that would allow it to go in with performance standards, just like we deal with, you know, with a lot of the stuff here. So it might be something, I mean, I can share it with you at any time. Yep.
Cause I, I'll, I'll be honest, I think it's a good idea and something I think I would probably support it. Do I think the rest of the citizens would support it? I have no idea. The only way to know is to take something before town meeting. And if it gets through town meeting, then it's a good thing. And if they shoot it down, we go, hey, okay, you don't want it, we won't bring it back. And a- as opposed to the, the uh. Issues we had with, with animal husbandry, which we brought back three times and got shot down three times. It took us a while to learn that lesson.
It's always a tough one. All right, I can, I can share that with you. I mean, I, I doubt it would be ready for you to adopt. At this town meeting. Um but, you know, we could look to the fall if uh, if there's a special town meeting in November.
We've got what, four or five different items that are on the agenda right now? If you look back over the past nine months, how many public hearings have we had on, on ordinance issues? That are gonna show up on the, on the town meeting in June?
I don't remember.
Yeah, we've had it, we've had a few of them. Because remember, the town manager has said that the board of selectmen want us to hold a public hearing. And move it up to them as soon as it's ready. None of this wait until the last minute.
Right. Right. Yeah, um, well, I can, I can share it with you, um certainly and. Uh, I think it's, you know, it's pretty transferable, so.
Okay, good.
Hey, Rich. How about throwing it out on the, the uh, uh town website? Asking for input on solar, just, just a quick feel.
Oh, I think if, if we just, if we do a workshop on solar, we'll get people turning out.
Yeah, but I mean, just to see if there's any P, anybody really. Interested. I'm just saying, ask for input.
It's an idea.
I mean, it doesn't hurt, it'll get people thinking. I mean, uh, you know.
I think it would be good to have something to give them to start work with. As opposed to, well, what do you think of solar? Cause everybody's gonna say, oh, I think solar is a wonderful thing. As long as it's not in my backyard.
That's what I'm saying is.
Well, and, and again, I mean, what, what we've seen down this way, for the most part. The solar projects are twenty acres and they were twenty acres for a reason. Um they were actually just a little under twenty acres because then they didn't have to go to the DEP for permitting. Um and they were able to do five megawatts in size, which at the time was. Um, the, the permitting size that Central Maine Power was willing to hook into. This particular one um that has prompted this, you know, this ordinance um or series of ordinances. Um is two hundred acres. Uh is taking up, I think there's twenty property owners that are involved in the sale of their land to make this happen. It's, this is. This is not, not the typical ones like we drive by, you know, down in this area, so. Um but what I've done is a two-step ordinance so that there's um a definition of a smaller type solar project versus a larger type. Um so I've got definitions that have been created as well as a number of performance standards that either one of them would have to meet. Um there's a lot of, lot of stuff I've done on several reviews for towns. And there's a lot of things that you pick up on along the way that um you build into these standards, so.
Cool.
All right.
Gives us a little bit of stuff to work on.
Yep.
So when, when we get done with, with all of these other items, then we can start all over again and say, okay, what do you want to put on the list? I think it's easier to do three or four items as a, you know. I, I, I liked Ted, I thought he was a great guy, but having twenty items on a punch list, just, we just never got around to it. Cause there were just too many.
It's tough, it's tough, um. But anyway, yeah, um, let me, let me work on the, on the accessory ADU. Issue and the um tiny home issue. Well, it doesn't sound like there's an urgent issue with tiny homes, so I'll. Kind of backburner that, but let me get the ADU ordinance realigned and straightened out for you to look at and make sure everything's. Ready to go for that.
Okay.
We wanted the local, uh, the surrounding areas about the um short term rental.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll do some research on that and share some stuff with you as soon as I can get it.
Is, is there anything else anyone has? Hearing none, y'all know what the next turn, move to a turn.
Second.
Okay.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Susan. It, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All done.
Okay.
Have a good week.
Night, all.
Enjoy spring Thursday afternoon when it passes through.
There you go.